I attended the Dickinson Candidates Forum. That was pretty interesting and everybody did an excellent job up there. I know I was very lucky in that when I ran for office, it was during a pandemic and I was able to do it online. And also I attended the Bay Area Turning Point Donor Appreciation Party up in Clear Lake. That was really nice. A great bunch of people and an excellent cause. Tended the Dickinson Historical Society Wine and Roses. And also I just wanted to mention real quick, some of the notes that I took at the Candidates' Forum. Some really good talking points that they mentioned, and I know, I guess, one of the things that elected officials are supposed to do is to steal the best material of other elected officials or soon to be elected officials. Transparency, AKA executive sessions. Just wanted to mention, the city needs to recognize that citizens will have questions when discussions occur in private and show more discretion in determining what qualifies to be included in executive session. And then the citizens should understand that some discussions need to be held in private to protect the city and its citizens' public information request. Recent topic. Cities should inform the citizens about the process and limitations that can occur due to required legal review and/or large number of requests. Citizens should understand that every request takes time away from the city employees doing other work and should therefore show some discretion if they can. It is your legal right, but try and so show some discretion if they want their city to function efficiently. In fact, in cybersecurity, it is a popular type of attack, the denial of service, to disable computer networks, which involves servers sending so many requests that it makes the resource unavailable by disrupting services. Only two more things. Drainage, we are on the coast, are therefore a drainage endpoint and will never eliminate flooding. So design and management of stormwater systems is paramount with an awareness that a regional approach will be necessary. Parks and Recreation Department, this was one of my favorites. The Candidates had a unanimous vote for the creation of a Parks and Recreation Department, and which was so awesome to see since it is one of the main things I've wanted to do for the city since I decided to run for City Council. It was also the majority opinion of the City Council and city employees who attended this strategic planning retreat this past February. And then one last thing, I'm sorry. We should utilize the bayou. We should utilize the bayou, what is the most unique and amazing feature of this community, and do so wisely, and with an essential component being access for everyone. And also, one last thing. It is silly season, as I've heard it called, election season, but I just wanted to remind everyone out there, I've heard city employees, local people running for office, people here on council, that there have been some, let's say, mean comments mentioned. I guess it's par for the course. I wasn't sure what to expect when I ran for office, but I just wanted to remind everything, everyone, that out there, regardless of whether or not you're very upset or angry, there are mechanisms to allow you to complain. My phone number is on the website. And, you know, public discourse is good. You have a public forum to mention your concerns as well, but let's do so with respect for each other. Because once that is lost, nothing gets done. Nothing, it's very inefficient. It just breeds inefficiency. So I just wanted to remind everybody to try to tone it down a bit and just be nice to each other. You don't know what another person's going through. They could be taking care of someone with cancer at home or going through health issues of their own. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and thank y'all for being here this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brantley.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight, maybe a little longer than I normally run, and I apologize. But the first thing is, I had the opportunity to get involved earlier in the year with an organization called Higher Up Texas. And Higher Up Texas is an awesome organization that serves Dickinson High School and College of the Mainland. They teach young adults life skills, things like financial literacy, civic engagement, cultural awareness, social responsibility. It's an excellent program that Higher Up Texas has put together. So I attended, I don't know, Becca, what was it, a month ago, the Higher Up Texas Honors Program they put together to recognize Higher Up Texas students from the past year, this year, all different areas, and I'm really impressed with that program. So I sent them a formal invitation. I wanted to recognize them tonight. Becca Davis, the high school program facilitator, is here with us tonight with Higher Up Texas and many of the Higher Up Texas, or a lot of the Higher Up Texas students from Dickinson High School and College of the Mainland. If you guys could stand up, give these guys a big round of applause. These are great students. And it's, thank you very much. They're here kind of to learn about civic engagement and how their local government works, so everybody be nice. I also wanted to recognize, tonight I wanted to recognize a member of our Dickinson Youth Action Council, who also happens to be a great fender of our family, and that's Kensington Bass. Kensington Bass is part of the Dickinson High School Revelers. Their one-act play, The Tin Woman, was one of two plays to advance out of the regional competition and onto the state 6A meet. So congratulations to them. And I hope I stole that from you, Jenna.
That's okay. I also want to mention that there's actually three Youth Action Council students that are a part of the theater.
Jenna will tell you about the other two when she gets to her. I wanted to save that for her. I also wanted to, everybody say a prayer for Councilman Louis Decker. He's not feeling well tonight, wasn't able to attend. And anybody that knows Mr. Decker knows that if he's not at a council meeting, he doesn't feel well. So everybody say a prayer for him that he'll get well soon. The next thing is, as I've said the last several meetings, folks that have put themselves out there to run for a position on this board, thank you very much. I know that you guys are in the heat of the election and you're working the polls and you're knocking on doors, and it's thankless. And I just, every one of you, thank you very much. Thank you for putting yourself out there. Thank you for wanting to make your city better. It's not always fun, I'll be the first one to tell you, but when you're able to interact with kids like Higher Up Texas and you're able to make a difference, it makes it all worth it. So thank you very much to everybody that's here, and if you're not here, you're listening online, maybe we'll get back to you. Thank you very much for putting yourself out there and running for office. Lastly, as I do every council meeting, I want to recognize a member of staff. Our staff here in Dickinson does a fantastic job. They're working very hard for you. They don't work for us. They work for you, just like we do. So thank you to the staff. But tonight I'd like to recognize, and you'll hear more from her in just a little bit, but Yvonne Briscoe. She does a fantastic job, and thank you very much for the job that you do. She's been working very diligently, tirelessly on our city's comprehensive plan moving forward. She has also revamped, revitalized, re-envisioned our planning department, and she has done an excellent job, both professionally and through personal challenges. So I wanted to publicly recognize Yvonne for all the work that you do. So thank you so much, Yvonne.
With that, Mayor, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Well, after that, Jesse, I really can't think of anything else left to say, other than welcome everybody here who's online. And I see quite a few people out there that are their first time at the council meetings. I think it's great. Every once, I think everybody that lives in the town or the city should come out to a council meeting every once in a while and see exactly what we do or don't do, because online you hear what we don't do, but you might want to find out that we actually do do things. So welcome to all of y'all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your time and your input. I also recently attended the Historical Society Wine and Roses event at the Casey Hall last Friday. Special thanks to the band Shades of Grey for performing for us, as well as volunteers and helpers who made this event a success. The MI Lewis Social Service Center will be hosting its community open house on Thursday, April 27th, from 4:30 to 6:30. 4:30 will be a meet and greet, 5:00 PM is a formal welcome, and then it'll be followed by tours of the facility. I've been volunteering with MI Lewis since 2021, and I hope that you'll all take a look to see what they have to offer and see how you can become more involved. Please RSVP to this event by visiting their website. Bayou Animal Services Best Friends Forever Foundation is hosting the first annual gala, the Black Tide Texas Gala, at the Dickinson Bayou Ranch on Saturday, April 29th. Get your tickets and join us. There will be live music, silent and live auction, local celebrities, and of course, the night wouldn't be complete without a mechanical bull riding contest and a champagne hayride. The Buccaneers on the Bayou Boat Parade is going on on May 13th. We want to invite you to join in the fun, either with your boat or get into a viewing area somewhere in Dickinson so you can watch the boat parade pass by. You can check out more information on the event on Facebook. Finally, the Youth Action Council is hosting their very first event. For those who don't know, the Dickinson Youth Action Council is a group that was formed just this last year. It was initiated by a student at Dickinson High School. It's a group of 10 students, serving as a youth city council and representing the interests of youth in our community by engaging their peers. This last year alone, they worked to activate voters within their campus, which is something required by the state, and they have registered more students to vote in this last year than we've had in the last five years of Dickinson High School combined. They're also planning an event called the Summer to Serve Youth Kickoff, where we will connect young people to community service opportunities in their area. There will be live music, food trucks, and a cornhole contest, as well as vendors from our community partners with volunteer opportunities for our youth. If you'd like to attend and you're a young person, please RSVP for free. You can find the link on the city Facebook page, or if you're somebody that has a volunteer opportunity to present to our youth, please connect with me so we can see how you can become involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 5B, the city manager update.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. We have a few different presentations to go through. Wanted to start off with our strategic plan. Ron Cox is here. Ron Cox, if you remember, worked with us on some strategic planning, and now he has a final report to present to the council, kind of the culmination of, you know, all of the work done by you guys in the retreat time, and then also kind of with staff input, you know, kind of put together the action plan for the next, you know, year or so of work for us. So Ron, thank you for coming to present the final report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and to you all, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your attendance and thank you for having me today. I have had the opportunity to work with you and work with staff through this process, and everything has been very, very positive and very helpful in terms of moving on into the strategic plan and the action plan. You'll be glad to know that I'm not going to go through either one of those reports, but I'm gonna, they were provided to you, I think, but I am going to give you some highlights, if you will, of that. And I've also been warned to stick with 10 minutes, so help me keep that promise. So we started this process in December, and I've got a question mark there by the December date, but it was actually just before Christmas and then just after Christmas that we interviewed, I interviewed all the city council members and spent some time with each of you. We had our session on January the 16th. We had our staff follow-up process on March 27, 22nd, and then here I am tonight on the 25th to wrap it up. So it's been a very good process. We divided our day into two sessions, one on governance and one on the planning side of it. The staff was in, along with you, we worked through this process together, but the governance part of it was primarily focused on the city council and the way you all worked together and your expectations in that regard. And the objective is to build a corral that you can work within, that staff can work within, that will be predictable and consistent. And it's about effective leadership, meaningful communication, understanding and fulfilling roles and expectations, and then proactive vision and planning. We started off talking about why did you run and what attributes did you bring? And I'm not going to do all of these bullets, you'll again be glad to know, but I just wanted to show that you spent a lot of time talking, we talked a little bit about each other and about why you're there, why you've come to the dais to sit at this level. But then we start to talk about how you work together collectively instead of individually. You come individually, you have your own circle of people that influence you, but then you start working together collectively. And that collective work revolves around leadership. How will you lead? And these are the examples that you used on describing what kind of a leadership mantra you would have, leadership philosophy, leadership model. We then talked about communication. How will you communicate, both with each other and with citizens and with staff? How will you communicate? And then what are your expectations of each other? And not only that, but what are your expectations of staff? And that is an important feature here because it says to the city manager, these are your expectations for how we should function and how we should progress. And the city manager passes those along to the staff, holds them accountable to that same process. I turned the tide on you just a little bit, turned the table and said, how do you think staff, what do you think staff's recommendations of you would be? This was not a question to staff, it was a question to you. And so you kind of sat back, thought about that a little bit, and talked about the kinds of things, if you were sitting on the other side of the dais, what you would, what you might expect of the city council as well. We ended our discussion on governance with vision and mission. Vision particularly sets the base for how you move forward and what you do. And I ask you simply to provide the elements that you believe, the key elements for the vision for Dickinson and for this city and how you would function as you move forward. And from this point forward, these become the vision elements that are important to you and should be used to measure actions and activities that you have in the future, whether they're policy actions, or whether they're personnel actions, or whether they're other kinds of leadership actions. They set the base, and your strategy should be consistent with the vision. That's what you want to look like when you grow up. You have a mission statement already, to promote a wholesome and vibrant community for the residents, but I also asked, what does that mean? What are the key elements to the mission? And these were the items that you all talked about and provided information on that night or that morning, that day. So we talked about vision and mission. From that, then, we rolled into the planning process, your core values, which are up here on the wall as well, I forgot about that. But we went into the planning process and we used what is a common process, a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we divided up into groups. You worked with the staff as well as council members. You mixed and mingled and talked together about the strengths and the weaknesses of the community, as well as the organization. We kind of divided those in half, and my report shows all of those and what you did. Then we identified out of those weaknesses, focus areas. And I'll take, we'll take a look at those focus areas in just a second. From those focus areas, we looked at opportunities, and from those opportunities, those get translated into strategies, goals, and action items. And then later, the staff added more meat to that by assigning responsibilities for who's going to be responsible for that strategy to the city manager and ultimately to you, what kind of partners there are, what kind of timeline it's going to take. So when you take a look at the implementation plan, the spreadsheet, if you will, you'll see all of those ingredients and what the staff believes is a reasonable way to proceed with the implementation of the strategic plan. There were four strategic focus areas. Achieve organizational excellence, expand the commercial tax base, expand city amenities and facilities, and enhance community engagement. Those four then had came, or you created strategies to begin to address those four key focus areas. And this is the, these are the key focus areas for, these key strategies, I apologize, for achieve organizational emphasis, complete the Unified Development Code, establish and refine standard operating procedures in all departments, and provide annual diversity training for employees. For expand the commercial base, these five areas were identified by you all and outlined. For expand city amenities and facilities, these four areas. And then finally, for enhancing community engagement, these four areas as well. Each of these four, each of these areas have action items associated with them in your implementation plan. And you all voted, if you will, on your priorities in this whole process at the end of the day, and these are listed in priority order as well as that you all worked on through the process. And in the report, you have all of the benefit of the details and who got how many, what got how many dots and how many points and that sort of thing as we went through it. We've talked about the staff implementation plan, and I worked here one day, but they worked more than one day to finish that up under Theo's review and analysis and guidance. So this has brought us through the entire process. It's been my pleasure to work with each of you on that, on January 16th, and talk with each of you in advance of that. It's been my pleasure to work with the staff, with Theo and his staff, to develop, put some meat on the table, if you will, and be glad to answer any questions you might have. And I hope I've stayed within my 10 minutes. Had one minute, all right, good. So thank you very much.
So just so council knows is that I have Anna will be getting, because I think we had gotten it too late to put into the packet itself, so we'll be getting, send that over to you. But the main thing to understand about the implementation plan is a lot of this was built up based on a lot of the listings, and if you remember, we had put like the stickers around the room, the stickers around the room kind of were what gauged kind of how we got, you know, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. So that was very interesting to see all the stickers on the board and that you took the time to count all of them.
We did, yeah.
So what we're going to do is, we can always refine it, it's a living document, so as you guys look through it, we can always come back in a couple of months, refine it, then things of that nature and work on it. But this is kind of what, with the consultant and the staff, is what you're going to be getting and the process by which it was created, so.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Next up, it's as part of, you know, as we know, it's election season, and we do have bonds. And last meeting, we had the school district here, and this time we have a special guest over from College of the Mainland. We have Dr. Glenn Burton and Dr. Lisa Watson. If y'all would please come on up, we'd love to have you to present on the College of the Mainland Bond of 2023.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Skipworth, and the council for having us tonight, but also thank you to the citizens of Dickinson, Texas, for supporting College of the Mainland as y'all have. I'm glad we had some representation tonight. Thank y'all. We are here to discuss the bond program that the College of the Mainland has coming forth. This program, just to let you know, has been endorsed by every chamber in the area. And last night, we had a Candidates Forum for our Board of Trustees, and all five candidates endorsed the bond. So whether they are elected or not, they're going to be endorsing the bond, and all five of those candidates, the winner will represent Dickinson. Let's start with a discussion of this, going back to our 2018 bond. That was approved by 66% of the public. That was the first bond passed in 50 years for the College of the Mainland. With that project, we built it safely, we built quality, we built it on time, and we built it under budget. But we still have opportunities and challenges in front of us, and that's what we're going to discuss tonight. Keep in mind, in Dickinson, Texas, with our education, 60% of our students do not pursue any post-secondary education. Now, Dr. Watson is going to walk you through the bond proposal.
Yeah, so as Dr. Burton said, that we had different activities that involved the community. So a lot of the activities that happened, we listened to what people said and we talked about, all right, where do you see this community in 10 years? And there were five themes that came out of it, and two of those, which were process technology and our allied health, those will continue to be ongoing needs in the community. But there were three other areas that came up. There were aerospace and aviation, there was maritime and logistics, and then there was hospitality and culinary arts. And so what that meant for us is that during Phase One, when we did the 2018 bond, we knew that we needed to grow for growth. And we had different demographers look at this community and say, all right, what are your predictions? And for all four of those demographic predictions, we outgrew that. So we built to grow, but we've already outgrown the space that we built in 2018. So what that means is that the three other areas that I've talked about, we're not serving this community. I mean, 60% of the work that's out there, we have no training for those students or people in our community. This is an opportunity, this year and the next month, this is an opportunity for us to grow and add all these different programs. And I'm going to ask jury to play a video in a second, but I do want to mention that in the video, you see already Phase One, which we've already built, so you'll see our STEAM building, you'll see our industrial careers building, but you also see some of the other opportunities on our campus. Jury, would you mind? Thanks.
to the citizens of Dickinson, Texas for supporting College of the Mainland as y'all have. I'm glad we had some representation tonight. Thank y'all. We are here to discuss the, uh, the bond program that the College of the Mainland has coming forth. Uh, this program, just to let you know, has been endorsed by every chamber in the area. And last night we had a candidates forum for our board of trustees and all five candidates endorsed the bond. So whether they are elected or not, they're going to be endorsing the bond and all five of those candidates, the winner will represent Dickinson. Let's start with the discussion of this, going back to our 2018 bond. That was approved by 66% of the public. That was the first bond passed in 50 years for the College of the Mainland. With that project, we built it safely, we built quality, we built it on time, and we built it under budget. But we still have opportunities and challenges in front of us, and that's what we're going to discuss tonight. Keep in mind, in Dickinson, Texas with, with, uh, our education, 60% of our students do not pursue any post-secondary education. Now, Dr. Watson is going to walk you through the bond proposal.
Yeah. So as Dr. Burton said, that we, we had different activities that involved the community. So a lot of the activities that happened, uh, we listened to what people said and we talked about, alright, where do you see this community in 10 years? And there were five themes that came out of it. And two of those, which were process technology and our allied health, those will continue to be ongoing needs in the community. But there were three other areas that came up. There were aerospace and aviation, there was maritime and logistics, and then there was hospitality and culinary arts. And so what that meant for us is that during phase one, when we did the 2018 bond, we knew that, um, we needed to grow for growth. And we had different demographers look at this community and say, alright, what are your predictions? And for all four of those demographic predictions, we outgrew that. So we built to grow, but we've already outgrown the space that we built, uh, in 2018. So what that means is that the three other areas that I've talked about, we're not serving this community. I mean, 60% of the work that's out there, uh, we have no training for those students or people in our community. This is an opportunity that this year and the next month, this is an opportunity for us to grow and add all these different programs. And, um, I'm going to ask jury to, to play a video in a second, but I do want to mention that in the video, you see already phase one, which we've already built. So you'll see our steam building, you'll see our industrial careers building, but you also see some of the other opportunities on our campus. Jury, would you mind? Thanks. So if you have a home valued at $100,000 after the exemption, you would pay about 63 cents per week above what you pay now, which totals about $32.72 per year above what you would pay. If your home, which is average is $170,000, it would mean about $50 per year in addition to have that campus that we just showed you. So why now? Because if we don't do it now, when will we do it? And how will we accommodate the jobs of tomorrow and 10 years from now? Uh, we know that 80% of all jobs, they may not need a four-year degree, but they do, 80% need some type of post-secondary education. And this is an opportunity to do this. Um, and then I'd like to show you just one more video, if you don't mind. And that's okay. If it doesn't play, that's okay. She's just saying thank you. Thank you for supporting your students through scholarships and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. If you have any questions, Dr. Burton and I would be happy to try to answer.
Again, thank y'all for your time.
Yes.
Is it going to involve, uh, any renovation or repairing of the pool?
I, I'm, I'm.
Is it going to involve, is the bomb?
The, the, the pool has become a conference center and so.
Then never mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, and that was actually done under a different, a different thing. So, yeah. Alright, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Few other updates for our council. First, I was going to say is that, uh, this past weekend, the Dickinson Bayou Watershed Committee had a boat tour. Uh, we had many, uh, people in the, in the, from the watershed committee on, on the tour. Chase Carey went out with them to kind of look at the, uh, current condition of outfalls and kind of strategize about some of the maintenance of some of our outfalls and also to begin, uh, discussions about regional, um, coordination with our sister cities so that we can work with our watersheding, uh, issues. Because as, as everyone knows, we are kind of the, uh, the catch-all for the water in the region. So we are looking at that and, and beginning those conversations. Uh, also wanted to bring up that, uh, we have our, um, blood drive on May 1st here at the council chambers in honor of Terry Rogers. Uh, we have, uh, also our library will be closed through the summer, uh, depending on how quickly the, uh, renovations can be done to restore the foundation. Uh, could be closed through December, uh, but we have to get that foundation fixed. So, um, administrative assistance day is tomorrow. So for those of you, including myself, that have admin assistance, I had, this is a great reminder for me, I mean, write that down. Um, I want to remind everyone that early voting is this weekend, next week and, uh, election day is May 6th. So please do your civic duty and, and, uh, vote. And, um, and I'll save one other community event for a second because we do have a, uh, an update on our parks, trails and record, recreation master plan. Who all is going to be a part? I know I have Jennifer Mack with, uh, Kendy Keast. Are you here? And Yvonne, are you coming up as well? Come on up, y'all, come on. So just want to give you guys a short update on our parks, trails and recreation master plan.
So you've been involved with a lot of the public engagement and so, um, staff's actually currently reviewing a draft, um, but Jennifer's just going to give you an update of where we've been and where we're going and.
Yes, uh, thank you Mayor Skipworth and Yvonne and, um, council members for allowing me to give this brief update on the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, we started back in August to October, working on the context and goals, doing some listening sessions with, um, city staff and, uh, members of the community. And then in November, January, um, went out to the different, um, parks, took inventory, did park assessments, um, and developed standards based on the online survey that we held in December, where we did, uh, two mobile meetings, uh, one at the Christmas market out here in front of City Hall, as well as the, uh, Festival of Lights at Park Paul Hopkins. Um, and then in February, March, uh, looked at the needs and priorities, also held the two open houses that were held here at City Hall. And, um, currently working on the plan finalization, um, and hoping to, uh, recommend to council, uh, either in May or early June. Uh, so the master plan contents, um, basically this is the, the different sections that we, uh, had. Um, it aligns with the parks and wildlife, um, to try to, basically based on the scoring criteria to hopefully get potential grants. Um, so you might recall the goals and objectives. We had everyone, um, in the community that attended, as well as some of you might have also done it, uh, where we had different goals and then they were ranked based on preferences. Uh, so the first goal was, um, the responsiveness to the needs of youth and adult sports for play and practice fields balanced with overall park and rec system priorities, including quiet places for passive enjoyment of nature and more spaces to host community gatherings. Uh, goal two, a bowl, a blue way and green way system of parks, trails and recreation that enhances the assets of the bayous and connects residents and visitors with major destinations, including but not limited to parks, schools, workplaces and shopping areas. And goal three, a collection of safe and modernized parks with a variety of playground equipment and other inviting and inclusive park amenities that are both cost-effective and durable. Uh, goal four, an emphasis on more public access for water-oriented recreational activities along the bayou. And goal five, an ongoing focus on recreational and leisure programming to foster the broader health and wellness of Dickinson residents. Um, and goal six, the use of co-op agreements and coordinate, coordinated efforts with, um, Dickinson ISD and private and non-sector partners to advance the goals and priorities of this master plan. Um, so based off of the public engagement, um, that we had throughout the process, uh, we developed local standards, um, and their implications for, uh, citing, design and improvements, um, and looked at different site selection criteria, location, access, topography, soils, vegetation, um, for the area and inventory, area and facility inventory that I alluded to earlier, um, we went out to each site, uh, looked at the different park classifications, their service areas, basically, uh, whether it's a neighborhood park, community park, um, and, and how, whether it's a half-mile radius, um, you'll see it on the next slide, I believe, where, um, we just show the coverage of the areas, uh, for the city. Um, and then each park, we went and did an evaluation, a condition assessment of what the amenities are, and that's located in the appendix or will be located in the appendix of the, um, master plan. Uh, so we took the needs assessment, assessment based on the national, um, park metrics. Um, basically 2,444 residents per park in Dickinson, um, as opposed to the national standard, that's 1,227 residents per park. Um, so clearly there is a, a need for additional parkland. Um, also there was, um, according to Dickinson standards, it's 2.69 parkland acres per 1,000 residents, whereas the national standards is, uh, 5.4. Um, so again, uh, according to the national metrics, uh, there's a need for pretty much double the amount of parkland that there is currently. Um, so the priorities and implementation, um, we're currently working on this, as Yvonne said, with, um, to provide, um, comments on this, but the master plan will have, um, an agenda similar to what you see on the screen on the left-hand side, um, where we have the priorities that were ranked, um, based off of community feedback. And then we'll have the timeframe, uh, order of magnitude costs and then how the, the potential funding sources. On the right-hand side, you'll see we've been investigating funding sources and how we might be able to, how you might be able to get some, um, different grants and, uh, when the applications are due and if, whether or not there is a match required. And though it'll be linkable and all this will be, um, through an online platform, so that'll be easy to click and go to each, uh, of those different sites. So, uh, the project priorities that we, uh, that were ranked, the first one was upgrade park security and add lights in and around parks and trails. The main, uh, two parks that were mentioned were Ray Holbrook Park and then also Paul Hopkins. Uh, priority number two, creating a network of hiking, biking, walking trails to link the different parks and HOA paths, um, Dickinson ISD campuses and residential neighborhoods. And that's, um, will be located on a trail network map. Um, priority number three, reprogramming and redesign of existing parks to provide greater variety of amenities. Again, this was mostly, um, Ray Holbrook Park and, uh, Paul Hopkins, as well as the, um, Dickinson Community Center. Um, priority number four was more courts and fields. Uh, priority number five was accessible external sidewalk connections. And then priority six was more boat access to Dickinson Bayou. Um, the administration priorities was to create the board and, uh, board and department for the Parks Trails and Recreation. Um, priority number two, the joint use agreement with the ISD. And, uh, priority number three, acquiring, um, the different parks and community center from Galveston County. Uh, priority number four was assessing and updating this ma- master plan on an annual basis, um, it would be, to be able to check off those different, uh, projects. And then priority number five, establishing emancipation trail alignment through Dickinson. Um, so again, just, these are the different, uh, public involvement sessions that we did have. We had the two sessions back in, um, October, those two mobile meetings, the online survey where we received 466 responses, and then also the two public open houses, as well as the several, uh, city staff meetings. Um, so, uh, thank you very much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
If you don't have any more questions, thank you Jennifer for coming. Absolutely. That was to give you guys a little status update on kind of where we are and where we're going. A lot of this master plan ties in directly with our mobility plan that you, you heard. So that's why we're trying to make sure there's that synergy between it, because we were talking about the tying in of all these different amenities to, the only way you can do that is obviously you have to go off the, off a park system to be able to get onto the sidewalks on the road. So that's how those two plans will interplay for an, uh, a citywide network of walkability and bikability. So, um, next up, we had, I was going to say is that, uh, next week is Public Service Recognition Week. And, uh, one of the things that I, uh, you know, was faced with and, and, and had to decide on was, uh, you know, uh, in the recent, uh, recently, a lot of our staff has, has become a, a target of, of some, uh, pretty, uh, uh, mean-spirited, uh, comments, uh, from the public, um, with a very specific, uh, um, you know, agenda in mind. And so some of the team members that we have were, uh, you know, wanting to have a voice, but then they were also afraid that they were going to be targeted by this group of people if they were to stand up here and, and, uh, give their, you know, give truth to power of their, of their words. And, um, so what, uh, they came up with was to, uh, kind of put together a little video for council, a little something to let them know kind of how they feel generally about the community. And, uh, and so they asked for my permission if they could, uh, take time to be at the city manager update, if, if they were to be given a couple of minutes of time to kind of say their piece in that way. And so I have allowed them to do that. And so I'll go ahead and turn it over to, uh, I think jury, do you have a video that, uh, for that?
It's election season. What does that mean exactly? It means that candidates complete all the required forms, put up pretty banners and signs, walk through the door explaining why they're the best choice to work for you. Actually, the purpose of an election is defined as maintaining a link between the government and the people, creating a link between elected politicians and their constituents. They provide a vital channel of communication between the two constituents and thus properly articulate their concerns. The funny thing is, nowhere in this explanation does it mention the ethical effect that local government elections had on staff that carry out the day-to-day operations of the organization. So why don't we just quit? After all, this is what we signed up for, isn't it? Employees who are truly engaged at the heart of the organization, with the staff serving, serving alongside of them, and the citizens expecting accountability to the jobs they signed up to do, have an issue with abandonment. No, not the kind that you may think. Engaged employees have an issue with abandoning the people they serve, the people they serve with, or by not abandoning their responsibilities, they end up abandoning themselves. Employees come here by choice. They have options to go anywhere they desire, but they choose Dickinson. They choose to work, to put the community first, to not walk away financially rich, but rich in spirit and heart. During our interview process, we asked this little question, why Dickinson? Nine times out of 10, the answer is intangible, includes the words community, heart, service, hometown, friends, family. As we've said, most of you go somewhere else and hold the same position at higher pay with much lower level of stress. Where does this stress come from? Is it the work? Is it the schedule? No. It's our own citizens and politicians who choose to use city employees as their armor and their political abilities. Over the past few months, stress, anxiety and fear is at an all-time high and it is caused by assumptions and self-decluttered facts from people who choose not to hear the truth. The executive leadership team has opened their doors, these members liquidating, ask questions or have needs. Employees have produced countless hours of information for PIRs, so much so that the job they're paid to do is now placed on the back burner to fulfill these requests in time. These public servants are essentially asked to pick their own switch and stand up in front of City Hall and have the entire community, internet, families and friends watch as they are beaten and torn down for someone's agenda. These people claim that they have the city's best interests at heart, but the truth is, the heartbeat of the city comes from the men and women who choose to serve. So why don't we say anything? Unfortunately. Unfortunately, due to fear of retaliation or just plain fear, employees won't speak up. This is not about retaliation in our jobs. We do not feel for our part of our supervisors or sharing our opinions with them. We are fearful of having an opinion that may vary from some of the more local members in the community, an opinion that easily get a target with some acts. We are here to promote the pulse of the environment community for all reasons. You therefore have no excuse, you who pass judgment on someone else, or whatever point you judge another, you're a condemned yourself because you who pass judgment do the same things. From chapter two.
Allowed them to go ahead and do that. Thank you very much. One of the reasons why I allowed them to have this moment is because for months and months and months, many of these staff members were being approached and they wanted to speak out in some way, shape or form, to which, you know, my advice has always been to just move forward and to do the job at hand and let our, let our work product speak for itself. But some of the recent events that occurred, I believe, has spurred, you know, not just a couple of staff members, but numerous staff members to ask for an opportunity to give voice to their plight, serving the community and to let the council know. So, so I want to thank them for doing that, thank them for their courage, thank them for serving our city. And so I think it's apropos that next week being Public Service Recognition Week is an important week to remember the hard work that these staff members do, despite the comments that they have to receive while providing a services community. So with that, I'll turn it over back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to item six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. We have one comment this evening under the general public comment section, Mr. David Lehman.
Good evening. My name's David Lehman. I live at 3802 Texas Avenue, Dickinson, Texas. Good evening, everybody. I've just got some notes here that I'm gonna read off so I don't go into left field and lose track of my thoughts in my old age. Do you want to start out by saying that my speech tonight is protected by my First Amendment rights? So anyway, let's look at every decision that we make as a council, as a community. Let's make sure that we make every decision we have with one question in mind, one answer. How does this affect every citizen's or the majority of the city's population's ability to thrive? And is this decision, is this decision the best interest of the community as a whole? That's how you have to play that. Let's make time for the media. If it appears that you're running and/or hiding from them, or appears that you're avoiding them, it looks bad. Where nothing may be going on, the optics of the video or sound make it look or appear bad, which is a reflection on all of its citizens and quite frankly, makes a person say, where there's smoke, there's fire. And it makes me wonder why you're appearing to act this way. So if you're not good at explaining yourself, hire someone that has the time and energy to do it for you. The press secretary for the White House is an example of this type of position. Conflict of interest, what sometimes appears to be true because of the optics of an interview might be true or not. So let's make sure that we are above board on absolutely everything that we do and not allow even a chance of impropriety to be allowed or conceived. My next point, Dickinson Management District slash the Economic Development Corporation. Boy, what a, what a mess this, these two are, in my opinion. I've never believed that government of any kind be in business or allowed to handle the types of things that a business should be doing. We should assist business entities to come here, help them with cap funds from these two groups, and then get out of the way and let them thrive. If they start to die or fail, assist them, fund their additional education towards success, and again, stand back and let them thrive. I will never understand giving a business hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to open up. There should be a cap on everything, period, end of story. So let's, let's seek out successful companies and offer them our services to relocate. Let's work together. Let's find a way to meet in the middle and improve our community and our core values. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on those items unless the council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
All right, there's a motion by Councilman Linton to approve. Is there a second? A second by Councilman Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, public hearing and action items from public hearing. Item 8A, conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for a church in general commercial zoning district for approximately 1.51 acres located at 3424 Highway 3 and legally described as Lot 1, Block 1 Ministry of Encouragement Church, sub 2021, abstract 19. We will convene this, this public hearing at 7:56 PM.
Good evening, council. This property is located on the west side of Highway 3. It's currently zoned general commercial. What they are actually seeking is a specific use permit for a church. Their plan is to actually expand the parking of the existing church, and that is all that staff has.
All right, thank you. Do we have any applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Would you like to present? You don't necessarily have to, but it's up to you. If you would, when you come up, if you'd please give your name and your address, please.
My name is Walter Shanks. I'm at the churches at ministry.
Could you be sure to talk into the microphone? There's people watching. Thank you.
My name is Walter Shanks. I'm the pastor of Ministry of Encouragement Church. We're 3424 Highway 3 in Dickinson, Texas, and we are looking to expand our parking area. Have a piece of land that we use and that we use it for recreational, recreational activities and so forth, but we're looking to now to concrete it and make it into a parking lot, because we have 28 slots now, parking slots now. With the property once it's used and utilized, it'll give us 75. We have new members, we have activities that are going forward, so we just need the extra room, more room for people to come in and worship God, so.
All right, thank you. We do have, oh, did you have something you wanted to add as well?
Oh, I was just supposed to port.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, thank you very much. We do have one public comment for this item, Ms. Sue Emmett.
Long time no see. I have just one thing, Sue Emmett, 3508 Hill Avenue, Dickinson, Texas. I have one thing I'd like to say about this. I'm not against the church or anything else, but they have very, very bright LED lights on their building that shines down Salvato Street. I don't drive much at night anymore, but when I do, those lights blind me. And I should not have to change my route because of their lights, is how I feel. But there are cars parked on the side of the street and the lights are so bright that sometimes you can't see the car hardly. So it's presenting a public hazard, in my opinion. I would love to see them just drop the lights, you know, instead of shining straight down the street. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so there is a chance for applicant rebuttal if y'all would like to say anything about, about that, or?
Medina Thomas, Minister of Encouragement Church. That won't be a problem. We will pray come go down.
Okay. All right. Short, short and sweet. Thank you very much. All right, appreciate it. All right, with that, we will adjourn the public hearing at 8:00 PM and move on to item 8B, consideration and possible action concerning a request for a special use permit for a church in general commercial zoning district approximately 1.51 acres located at 3424 Highway 3 and legally described as Lot 1, Block 1 Ministry of Encouragement Church, sub 2021, abstract 19. Motion approved by Councilman Brantley. A second by Councilman Wilson. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, that you had to have signed up for a public comment, unfortunately. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There is two readings of this, so if you'd like to ask a question after the meeting or the second reading, please feel free. All right, we'll move on to item 8C, conduct a public hearing concerning a request to amend the official zoning map from general commercial zoning district to planned development zoning district for approximately 4.87 acres, unaddressed property, GCAT ID 163210, generally located west of Hughes Lane, approximately 155 feet south of West Eats Road, and legally described as abstract 19, Perry and Austin, sir, part of Lot 100-1 Dickinson Edition D, and approximately plus or minus two acres, unaddressed property, GCAT ID 413646, generally located west of Hughes Lane, approximately 515 south of West Eats Road, and legally described as abstract 19, Perry and Austin, sir, part of Lot 100-4 Dickinson Edition D. We will convene this public hearing at 8:01 PM.
This property is located on the east side of Hughes Lane, just south of Eats Road. It is currently zoned general commercial, and they are seeking to change it to a planned development. The planned development that they're requesting is a mix of uses that just, it does not align with one specific zoning district. Their preliminary plan includes some office, retail, mini warehouse, mixed use and light industrial uses. And then they've also provided some renderings what the buildings may look like. And that is what staff has.
All right, thank you. Is there an applicant presentation for this this evening? Okay. All right, that's fair enough. And there are no public comments, so we have no applicant rebuttal. So we'll adjourn the public hearing at 8:02 PM. Move on to item 8D, consideration and possible action concerning a request to amend the official zoning map from general commercial zoning district to planned development zoning district for approximately plus or minus 4.87 acres, unaddressed property, GCAT ID 163210, generally located west of Hughes Lane, approximately 155 feet south of West Eats Road, and legally described as abstract 19, Perry and Austin, sir, part of Lot 100-1 Dickinson Edition D, and approximately plus or minus two acres of unaddressed property, GCAT ID 613646, generally located west of Hughes Lane, approximately 515 south of West Eats Road, and legally described as abstract 19, Perry and Austin, sir, part of Lot 100-4 Dickinson Edition D. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman, Councilwoman Simpson. We'll give that one to you. You don't have a lot of those. I think he beat you, but we'll go with it. Any, any discussion of this item? Yes, Council Wilson.
I was rose and in, in the, in the information that we received. You know, I believe that property is wooded pretty densely, all the way to the very back. We had passed, I don't know many years ago, a deal where, when you were developing that, that you had to leave if there was availability of a natural screening there, which would be probably the trees and stuff that were back there. I think it's a 10-foot depth from the property line to protect the neighborhood or whatever the adjacent property was from back. Is that included in this?
So what Planning and Zoning Commission recommended in this case on one of the conditions, a condition five right here, is actually to require a buffering adjacent to the residentially zoned property and residential uses. So what is being proposed is a minimum 20-foot of green open space being required if it's adjacent to a parking or drive aisle, or a minimum of 15 feet of green space required if it's adjacent to a building. So a little bit in excess of the 10-foot, it's 15 or 20 is what's being proposed in the planned development.
Okay, but when you, when you're talking about the green space, are we talking about using the existing barrier that would be there, rather than letting it tear down and then plant? Okay. Because this was, this, excuse me, this was specifically passed to protect residential neighborhoods from developers that are coming behind them. Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman, oh, well, y'all, Councilman Linn.
I was gonna say go alphabetically, but I'll go ahead and go first. Real quick, definition of green space, that can include, you know, leveled property or trees, is that correct?
So there is not a quite definition of, of green space currently in our zoning code that talks about setbacks, and it allows parking and drive aisles to be in those setbacks. And so we've added where those cannot be in the setbacks, that it has to stay green. It has to be landscape trees. It cannot be something that's going to be right up next to that residential.
Okay.
Councilman Brantley.
Thanks, Yvonne. I was just gonna ask if you could kind of walk us through the changes that staff and the commission recommended, just so we kind of have an understanding.
Yes. So these are actually staff's recommend, recommended changes, and I kind of highlighted where planning and zoning changed them. And so one is to add some less intense permitted uses, things that are currently allowed in neighborhood commercial. This just opens up the tenant space to be more marketable. The second is that, sorry, went the wrong way. The second is to adhere to general commercial zoning regulations if it's not specifically outlined in the planned development. And then basically what that does is, item three and four, because those are what's in general commercial, it just strikes those out of the document altogether. The next one is to provide that buffering next to the residentially zoned, and then sidewalks being installed on the property line, and then also a connection to the main building entrance. And then doing parking islands in the landscaping, having the waste enclosure in the side or rear yard so that it's not right there next to, like, visible from the street. And then detention being underground unless it's maintained and built as a landscape feature. And then the last little piece is, if it is above ground, what kind of requirements would we ask for?
That's all I've got. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item nine, ordinances. Item 9A, consideration and possible action concerning adopting the City of Dickinson, Texas Conference of Plan 2045. Do we have a motion to approve?
To approve.
There's a motion approved by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brantley. Have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I believe we have an executive session, but we do not actually need to have the executive session if you want to give just one update.
Sure. So the one update I wanted to give is, is in regard to the appointment for the police chief, what we're going to do is we're going to have the T-Cole backgrounds finalized, and then I'll be bringing the appointment on May 9th at that time. And, and then we'll be moving forward at that time. We just need to get those T-Cole backgrounds, and we're just wrapping that up and hadn't finished them just yet, so.
All right, thank you. That will move on to item 12, adjournment. A motion to adjourn by Councilman Wilson, a second by Councilman Linton. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:08, I'm sorry, 8:09 PM.